Good evening, everyone. The work session of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, November 9th, 2023, and the time is now 6:08 PM. Trustees present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Hodges, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, and Trustee Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to please silence your cell phones or any electronic devices. And at this time, our Vice President and Board Equity Committee Lead, Winford Adams Jr., will begin the meeting by reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continue growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. The first order of business is a review of the minutes from our previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the October 5th work session, October 17 regular meeting, October 21 special call session, or the October 30th special call session? Hearing none of these items will be submitted as part of the consent agenda at the November 14 Board of Trustees regular meeting. And so at this time, our next item is our superintendent remarks, and I will now turn the meeting over to our super proud superintendent, Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, Mr. Ant. Members of the board and those of you that are here present, I do have a quick update and some information that I'd like to share with you. And Mike will help me. All right, thank you. So I want us to get started. First and foremost, I'd like to invite all of you for a quick moment of silence in memory of Ms. Chantrice Holly. As you'll recall, Ms. Holly was one of our music teachers. She last taught at Jenkins Elementary. We had the opportunity today to have time with her, her family, and her friends for her home-going. As you all know, she, we just honored and recognized her back in December. You know, her successes as a trumpet player were amazing, but I will say that in reality, her passion for education and her heart for kids is what we will remember the most. And I'd like for us to have a few, a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. I also want to send our heartfelt prayers and thoughts for not only the Jenkins family, for our performing and visual arts family, and for her family. And you'll see, all of us are wearing a little bow. Pink was her favorite color with the flamingo. And so just to be able to carry her in our hearts. I also want to give you a quick update on where we are and what we are looking at as a district. I want to start with some information we received last year from Ms. Westbrook's and just want to update you on where we are. And as you know, the inflation rate since 2019 has increased according to the Consumer Price Index of 17%. Since 2019, you'll recall that we've been functioning and doing great work with the funding from the state, which is $6,160. If we were to look at that inflation rate, we would actually need at least $7,100 per student. And you'll see just the huge increases that we have had in the last few years. Our fuel cost has increased by 145%, as well as our insurance, just our general insurance policies have increased 83%. And you see across the board that inflation has truly hit our district hard, and we are still performing and doing great things with our students with the same amount of funding that we received back in 2019. I also want to do a quick reminder, as you know, we had the 88th Legislative Session that ended in May. Since then, we've had three special call sessions with no relief to school finance. The last session, Session 3, ended just on Tuesday with no discussion about school funding. And Tuesday afternoon at 5 o'clock, Special Call Session Number 4 was called. At this time, in that Special Call Session, on the agenda is school finance. Today, actually, this morning, started the hearings on what is known as the Buckley Bill or House Bill 1 being discussed. It does provide some relief for education, for specifically salary increases in a form of a stipend for teachers. However, what is, you know, very concerning to us is that previously, when you looked at Senate Bill 1, House Bill 1, there was an $8,000 voucher proposal. This new plan does increase that proposal to $10,400 for vouchers for families to be able to take their children to private schools and a $1,000 voucher for parents homeschooling their child. And that is of great concern. And I know last month, when we had our meeting, our Board Governance Chair gave an update on that information. So just want everyone to be in tune. Today was the first day of hearings. Tomorrow, it will continue. Stay very closely tied to understanding what vouchers would cause public schools, taking the funds away from public education, putting them in private schools, and yet, no increase for the funding of public schools. The second update that I wanted to share with you, as you know, our board, you as a board, we joined the lawsuit against TEA. And the lawsuit is based on the law that states that the commissioner needs to inform school districts prior to the start of school what the accountability measure will be. Last year, school started. We taught, our teachers did amazing work, our school leaders supported. We showed a lot of growth, and yet, the accountability system was not released. I'll tell you, it was actually just released on Tuesday. And so this lawsuit is against the state to say, "We in Spring ISD hold high standards for our students, but we also ask that the state let us know what those standards are before our teachers start teaching." On October 12th, the judge cited in favor of the districts and set forth an injunction that said that the commissioner could not release the ratings. The very next day, the state appealed that injunction. You will know that actually, just this past Wednesday or yesterday, today's Thursday, yesterday, the commissioner actually released the accountability system. So we now know how our schools will be rated, graded, on what we did last year. And so the what-ifs ratings were released. Using the what-if ratings with the 2022 data, we did show a lot of improvement. We can tell the commissioner has taken into account a lot of our concerns, but still, we are finding out how we're going to be graded after the tests were given. Right now, it is projected that on November 16th, he will actually, the commissioner will actually release the ratings for the 2023. However, the injunction and what the attorneys have said is that this cannot be done according to the court case. So we are waiting to hear more on this, but just wanted you to know that the commissioner is still temporarily prohibited from releasing the official A through F ratings. Of course, the attorneys are working through it, will know more, but the date right now, the commissioner has set forth, is November 16th. I will share with you that in spite of everything that is happening with the finance and no relief being provided from the state, even though the accountability ratings are looming, I will tell you that our district is working extremely hard. And we actually, yesterday with our principals, were able to celebrate a lot of accomplishments that have happened just in this semester. And so I want to remind everyone, we are, this month is Parent Involvement Month. This is the time that we really focus and celebrate and support all the work that our parents do by supporting our schools. And I am really excited to report that we're almost at 10,000 hours of volunteer services that our parents, our mentors, our partners have already invested in our schools. And our goal is to get back to the pre-pandemic levels, which, you know, pre-pandemic, we had like 60,000, and we are on pace to meet and exceed that. Meaning, our parents are in full support of our schools, in full support of our district. I also, you know, celebrating, and you'll hear a little bit more from Dr. Parisol in a few minutes, but our school choice program is as strong as ever. And so for our parents that are viewing from home, know that the application process is open now. We'll keep it open even through the Christmas break, so if you need additional time to be able to apply, it goes all the way through January 4th. And just to remind everyone, everyone, we have new programs that have come on board that parents can choose to attend. We have our Momentum High School. I think I saw, there she is, Ms. Smith, Ms. Stacy Rogers Smith, our principal there, coming on board. This gives children, young people, the opportunity to accelerate their learning, and they actually can choose when they want to come to school. Is it best if they come in the morning? Some have work hours that they have to complete, that they have to go to work, and they can come at noon, or they can come in the evenings. We also have our IB program at middle school, and I see Ms. Cully in the back. And we will be bringing on board the continuation for these young people that have been in the IB program at middle school to be able to matriculate to high school. I see our high, yes, I see our high school principal here, Mr. Hemphill, is also here. So great opportunities in spite of everything. And last but not least, I want to remind everyone, please go to our website. Our calendars are out. Our ACE Committee has worked really hard with the campuses and their colleagues to recommend two calendars. So if you just go to our website, I have the springisd.org/calendersurvey and go in there and vote. Our students have the opportunity to give us their input, parents, teachers, principals, everyone. So it is open through the Thanksgiving break. We wanted to give everyone plenty of time, and we'll be bringing that calendar for the board approval in our December meeting. And then, last but not least, I do want to turn it over to our Chief of Police, Chief Rodriguez. We do have some announcements and promotions, and I'd like, well, we'll do that first, and then we'll have the board come down. Chief, is that okay?
Wonderful.
All righty, thank you.
Good evening, good evening. Superintendent Inahosa, Board of Trustees, it's a great day to be at Spring. And that's something I've said time and time again. Recently, last week, on the 1st of November was my two-year anniversary here at the Spring ISD. And if you told me 25 years ago when I got on the enforcement that I'd been working here, I wouldn't have thought much to it, wouldn't have given much credibility. But what a glad feeling I get when I think about coming to work here. And I don't say that just because I'm the chief of police, folks. When I first came to work here, after being here a few months, I went and had my picture taken as a sergeant. And one of our former lieutenants who formerly with us, Lieutenant Max Tolliver, saw this just giant goofy smile on my face, and he's told me in front of everybody, goes, "That's a guy who wants to be here." And you're right, I wanted to be here then, and I'm so happy to be here now. Tonight, folks, I'd like to address the crowd a little bit here. So tonight, we're going to be having a little special event. Going to be promoting four Martinez's. And just a little bit of backstory on that, why this is so important to us here at the police department, and why it's important to you here as part of the Spring family. It's important to note that from February of this year until October 2nd of this year, your police department hired exactly zero offers, zero. And we, because of attrition and numerous other factors, we were down, we reduced a total of one-third of our workforce. And that's a lot of cops when you start talking about protecting kids and protecting staff members and our community in general. We were down quite a few people. Thankfully, the Board of Trustees, July 1st, voted in a significant pay raise for the men and women of the police department here at Spring ISD. That happened on July 1st. The first week of July, we started receiving applications, qualified, great applicants. That is a very lengthy process we go through as a police department. And working with HR, we swore our first one of that group in on October 2nd. I'm very happy to say, since October 2nd, we've now sworn in a total of eight, bringing a total of 84 years of police experience to Spring ISD for the kids and the staff members here at Spring. I'm very excited about it. Thank you very much for making that investment in our police department. We have more coming, though. We have more to come. We're swearing another person in on Monday, and we will probably bring in one or two every couple of weeks here until we're fully up. And if you would have told me at the beginning of this school year that, "Chief, we were going to fill all these positions this year," I would have looked at you and said, "That's going to be a tall order." But we're getting there, and we're getting there rapidly, and I appreciate it. So on to the, what we're here to do tonight. So we've recently had a round of promotions into our leadership and our investigative team. And tonight, we're going to do some recognitions of that. And I'd like to bring up, first of all, promoting to the rank of corporal, Jessica Assimi. Jessica has been with us several years. She's been on night shift patrol, she's been on day shift patrol, and she's going to be going to beat three. She'll be helping out at Spring High School, McNabb, Sawyers, and that area.
So Chief and Officer Jessica, we're going to come down in the horseshoe so we can check her.
Please do, please do, come on. All right, and I'll pit him, and we can all step over there for pictures.
No.
Okay, excuse me.
I'll pit tomorrow, take a day off tomorrow.
She said if I pit, stick her too hard, she's taking a day off tomorrow. Y'all heard it. Let her be here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a new addition to our team. She's coming up, Detective Amaya. This is Detective Ike Amaya. He comes to us from several years of experience with the Houston Police Department, where he was an investigator there. And now he's working with our detectives as one of our detectives here at the police department to help us out here in Spring. Congratulations, Juan, thank you. And now another familiar face to the rank of sergeant, we have Ryan Flanely. Ryan has been with us for several years. He's also probably better known for his canine partner, Rock, who's always around the district and is well-loved. Ryan was promoted to corporal, and now he has tested and come out, and he's the sergeant, he's been over to the Spring area, working with Spring High School and that feeder pattern. So we're very excited to have him here. All right, last but not least, come on up. New to the district, we have Sergeant Fred Young. Sergeant Young comes to us from the Houston Police Department, where he spent 33 years, nearly 20 of those years as a supervisor, working all over the city of Houston. He recently retired a couple of weeks ago, and we snatched him up. You only got a week off. Welcome, welcome Sergeant Young. Sergeant Young will be assigned to our beat four. He'll have schools like Dewitt, Twin Creeks, Bailey, and then also Winchey High School. So again, welcome and congratulations to all of our teammates. Thank y'all very much.
Yes, everybody's squeezed together. All right, I'm going to play the role of Jim tonight. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three, get up easy here. It's good, thank you.
Mr. Ant, that concludes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa, and thank you, Chief. Always wonderful to have an opportunity to recognize advancement and achievement within the district. So thank you. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before they're considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Madam President, we do not.
All right, thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Student Success, Dr. Matthew Parisol.
Thank you, President Durant. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Inahosa, and all of our guests here tonight. This first item that I have is related to our strategic plan. You can find the item on page 49 of your packets. And we have a presentation tonight. We launched our Every Student, Every Student, Every Teacher, Every Day Strategic Plan in 2020, 2022, 2023. And during that year, there were some great gains. We're excited to be able to share tonight a presentation specifically looking at opportunities. Each of our senior leadership team members carries and is a champion for one of the priorities. Opportunities does follow under the Office of Innovation and Student Success that oversee. Tonight presenting will be Dr. Eric Tingle, our Director of Strategic Innovation. Dr. Tingle carries a lot of lift in our strategic plan as he provides support across all stakeholder groups and helping us keep up with the data, as well as ensuring that each of us are in alignment and making progress towards the goals in the plan to reach our North Star goal in 2027. So I'll pass it over to him for the presentation.
Good evening. Can you all hear me? Through the microphone? Oh, it was already on. Good evening. President Durant, Dr. Inahosa, Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for having us today. Dr. Parisol kind of took my speech already. That's kind of what I was going to say, exactly what he said, so I will not repeat it. But I am happy to be here today. As the Director of Strategic Innovation, I do get the opportunity to work with our strategic plan, and I also get a chance to work with our coordinators through our schools of choice process, which we will highlight today. So I will jump right into the presentation. This is a visual of our model of school improvement, which is so fitting, right? Because everything that we do falls under the umbrella of the district mission and vision, which is set by the Board of Trustees. As Dr. Parisol mentioned earlier, we will touch on the opportunities today, and so I will jump right into it. We do have our North Star goal, which I did, which the idea is to make sure that we are increasing the percentage of students that are sitting in A and B schools, and we're decreasing the number of the percentage of students that are sitting in D and F schools to zero. That is our North Star goal by 2027. Dr. Parisol and I just got off the road from the Systems of Great Schools Learning Lab, which supports us with our North Star goal. I will tell you, I knew that I was presenting opportunities tonight, and we spoke about it on the way back. And here in Spring, we have great opportunities for kids, I think miles above some of the other districts that are working through this process. And so I will, I will say that. This slide right here is basically just kind of summarizing a little bit of the things we have here in Spring. Spring ISD is choice and opportunities. I'm going to speak from my experience as a parent. All three of my students, all three of my children go here to Spring ISD schools, and we know that whether we apply to a school of choice through the lottery process, whether we go through our neighborhood school, whether we want to transfer to another school, we know that we have opportunities for associate degrees, and we have opportunities to participate in pathways that are going to help our children be better and successful in college. It's going to help our children be successful in any career they would like to pursue, whether that's college or not. And so we know that you do not necessarily have to apply to a school of choice to get a great education. The goal is for every single seat in Spring ISD to be an effective seat, right? Effective in the way that it supports each and every single student. So we know that here in Spring ISD, we're going to highlight a few of our programs, but did not want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that even though we're talking about our nine schools of choice, we have opportunities at every campus here in Spring ISD. Speaking of some of those opportunities, this is a visual of our CTE pathways. Currently, we have 31 CTE pathways. We have different opportunities at different schools. As I stated earlier, the good thing about it is that we're continuing to expand opportunities based on student interest and based on student choice. I will start with Carl Winchey High School. So Carl Winchey High School is one of our schools of choice. All of the schools that we'll talk about here in the future are application schools you have to apply to receive admittance into those schools. I will point you to your purple folder. Each of you have one, and we do have a pamphlet for each of those campuses in there that we are going to use for our marketing and our showcases. As Dr. Inahosa stated earlier, our applications are open, and so the information that you have in those trifolds, we plan to provide to the campuses to be able to use as marketing for their campuses. So we know Carl Winchey High School has the three towers that they specialize in, the professional, technology, and medical tower. Moving on to the KNEP. and Medical Tower. Moving on to the KNEP Tech, the first cohort of the KNEP Tech are juniors at this time. So we're super excited about that. We know that in the spring, they will be receiving internships, internal and external, so providing opportunities. I have an opportunity to sit in on our CTE Advisory Board that talks about different opportunities for kids, and we know that we have those coming for internal and external opportunities. Moving next to Momentum High School. Dr. Hinaosa touched on this high school a little bit earlier. We do have opportunities for students. The good thing about Momentum High School is that it does provide a flexible schedule. The application for Momentum High School is currently open, but it is year-round. We do continue to accept students even after the deadline closes. And so we want to encourage families to look at the School of Choice website for Momentum and look at the opportunities that they have to provide there on the campus. Moving next to our Spring Early College High School. The uniqueness about Spring Early College is that it is located at Lone Star College. It is on the campus of Lone Star. Visited the campus multiple times. Students get an opportunity to transition into the college field early while in high school. A great opportunity for students to be getting their instruction from college professors. Also, they get two graduations, right? You graduate from Spring ISD, you also graduate from Lone Star, which is an amazing opportunity for our students. Spring High School is now currently an IB Candidate School. We are super excited about the opportunities that are happening at Spring High School. We will be providing the Middle Years Program, which is an extension of the program that's being offered at Spring Woods Village. It is going to be set up like a school within a school, so it is part of our School of Choice application process. So we will allow families to apply. You do not have to be at Spring Woods Village to apply, to be in the IB Middle Years Program at Spring High School. So that is an opportunity that we have coming. We are in the process right now of gathering all of the training that teachers need, that need to be able to implement this program effectively. We have great support from senior leadership team, great support from the IB Associates that are working with our district. And so we are excited about the vision of this IB program and what it's going to do for our students. That continuation, I think, is needed. And so when students leave the IB program at Spring Woods Village, they'll be able to transition into a high school program and graduate with an IB diploma. Robertson Middle School, similar to Winchee, they have different pathways, but they have communities at Robertson Middle School. STEM, Law Enforcement, Performing Arts, and Environmental Agricultural. Similar to all of our Schools of Choice, they are accepting current fifth graders. You apply as a fifth grader, and an incoming sixth grader is who's accepted at this campus at Robertson. School for International Studies at BAML. We are excited about this dual-language program. We are accepting pre-K and kindergarten students for this opportunity, but not only for dual-language. Students in the middle school levels, once they are exiting that dual-language program, are going to be exposed to world languages across the world. And so we are excited to continue to implement that at SISB, their program. And so we are currently accepting pre-K kindergarten students for that program or students that are currently in a dual-language program that's compatible with that program. Spring Leadership Academy, similar to Momentum, moved into a new building this year. We are super excited about the Leadership Officer Training Corps that's being provided to students on the campus. Another focus for Spring Leadership Academy is business, and so we are excited about the opportunities that they have and that they provide. All students participate in the LOC program at Spring Leadership Academy. And we have Spring Woods Village Middle School. We touched on this a little bit earlier, but it is our IB World School here in the district. Spring Woods Village provides IB instruction to not only schools that are applying to get into the school, but to their zone school. It is a school-wide program, which means all students that attend Spring Woods Village benefit from the IB program there. This is just a snapshot of our timeline. We touched on this a little bit earlier, but I do want to highlight the fact that we do have lots of family engagement involved into this process, right? So we launched the application, but each of our coordinators and principals are working diligently to make sure that our families are aware of these opportunities that we provide here in Spring ISD. One of the ways that we do that is the showcases. So each of the campuses have a showcase. Those showcase dates can be highlighted on the School of Choice website. So each of the campuses brings families together to highlight their program, to provide information on those programs, and those are on the School of Choice website. Another thing that we're doing this year is providing instruction and support for parents that need help with applications. So we are doing face-to-face at the Family Engagement Center. We're doing face-to-face sessions for parents, which all those sessions are on our School of Choice website, and each of the campuses are also providing support for parents at their individual campuses, just to make sure that we, parents are aware of the process, and we're also making sure that parents can apply and get support that way, through support that we have going on. We are recruiting. So each of the coordinators are recruiting at each of the campuses to make sure that families know about the opportunities. As I stated earlier, my daughter is in fifth grade, and so she's ran home and told me that the middle schoolers are coming to our campus and telling her about the different campuses that are available. So I know that the recruiting is working. I know that they're out in the fields providing that opportunity for families.
So the middle schoolers are going out and talking with our elementary school fifth graders?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And also providing parent sessions, so that parents can get information about the schools as well. We know that it's a team effort, right? Parents have to know what they're getting themselves into as well. So yes, that is happening.
Are we getting awareness and promoting outside of the campus?
So we are sending communiquettes out to the community. So we are sending those out. We've sent a couple already, just kind of letting families know when the showcases are, when the application is open, when the applications are closing. So those have went out. We're sending them to specific groups of parents, right? And so if you are a current fifth-grade family, you're getting the information regarding middle schools. If you're a current eighth-grade family, you're getting the information regarding our high schools.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I also, I don't know if Ms. Durant and I are kind of on the same page here, I think. I hear you saying you're getting it out to our parents in the community, but I'm thinking more, and I think Ms. Durant may be thinking more, of our non-parents in the community. Parents whose kids are going to other schools, our private, to be honest, our private charter schools. We want them to know about this as much as we do parents that our kids are going to our schools. So let's even look out to our churches, to our civic organizations, chambers, businesses. Let them be aware. I love your brochures. They are beautiful. But let's get them in the hands of stakeholders throughout the community, rather than just our parents, please.
Yes, ma'am. The good thing about, we went to a new platform this year, and the good thing about it is that I've specifically asked the platform to track which students are zoned to Spring ISD schools that are not going to Spring ISD schools, that are applying to our Schools of Choice. As of today, right before this meeting, we have 61, right? We have 61 applicants that live here in Spring that don't go to our schools, that have applied to come back to our schools. So we will be tracking that data. We want to know if you live here and you're now interested in our schools, and we want to continue to offer that resource and offer our opportunities to those families. So I'm glad you mentioned that, because that is one of the measures that we'll be tracking throughout this process, just because we're interested. We want to know, you know, who lives here and who doesn't go, and who's now applying. So how can we bring you back to our community?
I was trying to wait until the "thank you" Q and A slide came up.
There you go.
Eric, thank you.
There you go.
No, we jump right in sometimes. So yeah, I want to echo my colleagues here. The question I had written down as you were speaking is, what are we doing beyond brochures to market our Schools of Choice? I attended a training session in Clear Creek, I think it was, where Friends of Texas Public Schools talked about, in general, public schools' failure to market. Our competitors are marketing. If you're watching TV, you're seeing commercials for charter schools. They're putting up billboards. They're doing things beyond what we have the budget for, because they get budgets for this stuff. And so we have to be creative. And so any resources that we can come to, to really get the word out, so that as you're going through your social media platform, you're seeing the commercials, talk about all the great things we have going on in our Schools of Choice. Because I think if people knew, they'd be beating down our doors. And so like, to the extent we can do a better job of getting that out there. I got a bunch of questions, and I don't want to hog all the time and have us here late.
And I did just want to jump in. It's all right. I know Dr. Tingle is very humble in the work that happens. And so in addition to our own comms team and the social media, we have a number of individuals here tonight, too, that are all part of a massive team that are spreading that work. And we'll have them stand in a second. But just to let you know, in 48 hours, we had over 500 students apply. Of those, over 40 of them were employees that had kids that had applied, and there were all over 50 out of district that didn't even live within the district. I know Eric shared the in-district that aren't attending. So word is definitely getting out, not just about, and the exciting thing is, those statistics aren't just similar to our Schools of Choice, but also in our transfer applications. The number of families that live outside of our district or who live in our district and who aren't attending but are applying for transfer applications is coming up at a great rate. And that's because of all the great things happening here in the district. But Dr. Tingle, did you want to introduce the coordinators and our principals that are here tonight?
Absolutely. So we do have principals and coordinators from each of the campuses. I think what we'll do is have all of them to stand and be acknowledged. So if you are a principal or coordinator here, if you can stand and be acknowledged. Thank you all so much. As Dr. Pariso stated, you know, we meet with them on a consistent basis on how we can market their program, how can we support them, what changes can we make to the application that will allow you to get the data you need to make informed decisions for families, right? How can we make sure that your program is marketable to be able to get students to be able to apply to your program? And so those principals and coordinators definitely help to make that work. They're on the grounds. They lead their showcases on their campuses, and so we're super excited to have them here this evening. So thank you all.
Also, I was very pleased to see the IB program developing at Spring High School. And I have a question around timeline. As I recall it, Spring Woods Village broke some kind of record getting certified as an IB school back when that happened. And you mentioned that that's happening at Spring High. I just was wondering, is there any sort of timeline for, as we start the process, when we might be certified and actually have those graduates with IB diplomas?
So we plan to be on a track to authorize Spring High School in 2025 with IB. We also plan to start the current cohort. So any eighth grader that's applying right now, they can start taking Middle Years Program classes this fall, right? Fall of 2024. So they can take their classes in fall of 2024, they transition into their sophomore year, and we're on a track to have that same cohort in their junior year can start their diplomacy, right? So that's the timeline that we have in place, and we've talked to the IB Associates, and we think we can make that happen. So we are working. I know Mr. Hemfield is already going to head of schools training, getting that information. We're going to transition the IB coordinator and myself to get our training next, and then the teachers are right after us. So we have a plan to do that.
That sounds beaggy to me.
It is beaggy.
Big hairy audacious, like, really, I really appreciate that, Dr. Tingle. Okay, I'm going to trim my questions. The LOC program at Spring Leadership Academy, have we got any data? Have we seen where that's increasing the amount of students that participate in JROTC?
The first group of students are now sophomores, and they've actually gone to all of our Schools of Choice. We haven't tracked them. We have them in the P-Tech, we have them at Winchee, and we have them at Early College. We haven't seen if the P-Tech kiddos are in or not, but we can certainly track that group. And now we'll have the opportunity to have larger numbers, because there were in a school that was down to 325 students. So now we have the opportunity for 600 students. But we'll definitely look and see where our sophomores are at now, because that's where, this is going to be the third graduating class, the third class of eighth graders coming through.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback off of his question, because that kind of touched on, what I was wondering was the success rates of all of our students that are moving from the middle School of Choice courses and then moving on into the other schools. Do we have some numbers around that? Do they perform better? Are they, that's one part. And the second part is, for those that are picking a track, are they sticking with that track once they get into a high school, if that option is there? And if not, kind of what directions are they taking? I'd be curious to know.
We can certainly research that information and get it back to you.
And I know, Dr. Tingle, you jumped ahead one slide, but I think you were going to pull up the website real quick. I know our comms team has been working with campuses, and each of the Schools of Choice have a video. And so those videos, parents can see what that experience looks like directly from, before they even apply. And then they also are utilizing those videos and marketing those videos through social media. And I know there's always challenges playing the videos, yeah, live, but, you know, those are all available. And so we encourage our families who are listening and those in the community to continue to share out. It gives you a great overview and visual of what that campus experience is going to look like. And then make sure you attend those sessions that our principals and coordinators are doing as you walk through and get the live experience of the campus.
Are we tracking the clicks on those videos in the volume?
Yes, there are view statistic analytics that we can pull for you as well. I'll make a note of that.
And then all of this is available on Twitter. You'll see Twitter, you'll see Instagram, and you'll see our Facebook pages. And we encourage all of you to reshare, because oftentimes, if they see a board member, they see someone else resharing, they will then reshare. Because I know all of our principals are on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook, and then we retweet. But also, if you can reshare, it always helps us get the word out. I think Facebook really talks to our parents, where the Instagram talks to our kiddos. And, you know, we're very high, high-profile there, so it definitely helps us. And then, of course, everything, you know, takes them back to the website, where they can have the experience with the interactive, because you can apply right here online, and then, of course, the face-to-face that the schools are doing.
That's why I was kind of curious if the videos are being viewed from the website or from a social media platform, to see where we're getting our biggest bang from.
We can certainly pull all the data and statistics that we have today and have that available for you.
Yeah, the spell checker wants to convert baccalaureate to bachelorette, I see.
Really exciting opportunities for our students. And we're unfortunately challenged in our district. I was talking to another board member, and I think Tomball, they have one charter school in their whole district. We're, at last count, we had 14, up to 16, 16 in Springs District compared to our neighbors that only have one or two. So we've become very popular when it comes to charter schools, but I don't think the But I don't think the awareness is out there. And I always share that awareness is the first step to change. So getting out there and promoting it, letting our parents and our community know what's there, especially those that are in those 16 other schools, that what we have to offer is better and brighter. Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much, Dr.
Thank you.
And I believe, Dr. President, the next item as well. I was going to ask Dr. Tingle to remain, because he is in that next presentation.
Then you can continue.
Thank you, Madam President. The next item, you can find on page 67 of your packet. This is an MOU, a memorandum of understanding between Spring ISD and the ExxonMobil Foundation. In addition to the MOU, there's also a presentation. And we've been, as part of our strategic plan work, we've continued to expand and work on our community partnerships. And ExxonMobil Foundation came to Spring, and we've been working together and are very excited to continue to promote the STEM work that we have started as we've added P-Tech and Poly, Cloudin Poly Tech Middle School, and the STEM work we've been moving across the campuses. And this is a STEM-related center that's being built. And so I'm going to ask our guests from the ExxonMobil Foundation to come and join Dr. Tingle up on the podium. And we have with us today Dr. Shanita White and Ms. Catherine Taylor, both members of the leadership team at the ExxonMobil Foundation.
Good evening, and thank you all for giving us time on your agenda today. I feel like I'm among friends, so some of you I've talked with, we've met, we've had lots of conversations. So we are very happy to be here to talk about our STEM initiative with ExxonMobil Foundation. Again, my name is Dr. Shanita White. I am the STEM Program Manager at ExxonMobil. I just joined ExxonMobil in April. And prior to that, I was in higher education for 13 years as a professor of operations and supply chain management. And I was an Associate Vice Provost of undergrad academics, as well as an Associate Dean of our School of Entrepreneurship in Minnesota. So it is my delight to be part of the foundation and part of this initiative. I'm joined by my dear friend and colleague, Ms. Catherine Taylor. And she has an extensive career leading in youth-focused workforce development nonprofits. She is phenomenal, and in every way, and I'm so happy to be working with her on this initiative. Actually, our entire team is built of former educators and those who have worked in educational organizations, whether locally or in other states. So ExxonMobil. I can click, thank you. ExxonMobil since 2000 has given, has supported education initiatives and about $1.6 billion worth of support has gone to educational initiatives over the past few decades. And we know that our business is built of innovators. And we know that increasing the pipeline of talent that can come to work with ExxonMobil is what we want to do, and is important to us. And we understand that STEM disciplines are the type of people, the type of students, we want to come and be a part of our organization. So this is really the underpinning of our initiative with STEM. All right, now we're good. He's going to get me for that afterwards, I'm pretty sure. We have three key priorities that we are focused on with this initiative. The first, and I'll talk about each one of them in a little bit more detail, but just briefly, our teacher STEM training program, which works to, works with the middle school teachers in math and science disciplines to help them with the subject matter, to make sure that they have the content knowledge as well as the pedagogy to deliver the content effectively in the classrooms. We also are working on our teen engineering and tech centers that will launch in the fall of '24. That will be an after-school program for our high school students. Again, I'll talk about all of these in a little bit more detail. And then lastly, we have access to STEM resources. And we've done some things already with Spring with robotics and some other work that we have provided these resources to some of the students here in Spring ISD. But our ultimate goal, and what it says, is harnessing STEM education as a launchpad for student success in communities where we operate to help build a long-term talent pipeline for a greater economic opportunity, is our goal. So as I mentioned, from middle school, we'll be doing our teacher STEM training. We will eventually go into elementary school. Right now, in our first year, we're going to just start with middle school. And then our teen engineering tech centers will be with high school. And then we'll be offering scholarships and other opportunities for students as they move into universities after they graduate from high school. So our teacher STEM training program, this is going to be, again, twofold. Content knowledge in science and math disciplines, as well as content delivery support. So as a former educator, I know that I have been asked to teach a course that I was not, was that still my specialty to teach? Because there became, there was a need in my department, and so we need to step in and teach the course. I was, might have maybe been a chapter or two ahead of my students as I was going through this. And so we know that sometimes those things do happen. So through this program, we're working with Texas A&amp;M. It will start the summer of '24 with a two-week residency in College Station. And we'll have a cohort of 20 students that will come from the Houston area. It'll be a larger cohort. ExxonMobil is going to select 20 teachers to come through. Texas A&amp;M, to align with their strategic priorities, will have the other eight to 10 teachers and make up a cohort of about 28 to 30 teachers total. After the two-week residence, they will work on virtual learning through the STEM graduate certification at Texas A&amp;M. This is a 12-credit certification that they will take starting in the summer and go out through the year. So it'll be three in the summer, three fall, three spring, and then the next summer it will wrap up. And so this particular program is completely free to our teachers, as well as to the district. They will also be supported with monthly cohort meetings to make sure that they have the support they need when they go back to their classrooms. And we're hoping that they can build a great supportive network of like-minded colleagues that can work, that can help each other as they kind of find themselves in a classroom, if they get stuck, if they need some type of help along the way. Ultimately, we want, if you take our vision all the way through, we would love for the teachers who participate in the teacher STEM training program to really get inspired. We say here, a confident teacher is a good teacher. A skilled teacher produces skilled students. An engaged teacher produces an engaged classroom. That those students will really get excited about STEM disciplines. And then when they go to ninth grade, they'll go to our teen engineering and tech centers as well, graduate, go to college, study a STEM discipline, and then ultimately come to work at ExxonMobil. So our teen engineering and tech centers, these are going to be after-school centers, one in Spring and one in Houston, starting in the fall of '24. Spring ISD is an early adopter, and we are so excited about just really all of the support. After Tingle has been phenomenal, and all the individuals that we work with has been phenomenal with the work they've done to help us to, as we're planning and launching this work. We will start with ninth graders in our first year, and we'll add on grades as we continue to grow and build our programs. We have a capacity of, as you see on the slide, of about 150 to 200. We're not going to quite go there yet. We want to make sure that in our first year, we can get our feet wet, get some learnings happening there, and start off with a smaller number. Ultimately, in that first year, about 75 students we would like to have at each of our locations. The after-school program is hands-on STEM-focused. It'll be makerspace environment. The students will be invited to do kind of a make-and-take types of activities. There'll be academic support, as well as college readiness and career counseling support on site. The students can spend about two, two and a half hours with us after school, where they'll be fed snacks and meals, and they'll have transportation to and from the centers. I'll just pause here for a moment and turn over to my colleagues to talk to you a little bit more this quickly about what we anticipate doing with curriculum and career.
Great, I think this one's on as well, yeah. So I think Shanita, you did a great job explaining it. But again, the curriculum will be hands-on, really project-based learning, really focused on STEM modules that are aligned with TEACs, but also designed to support a strong base in math and science. So I always talk about the learning is happening in the classroom, and this is really for students to extend their learning in a project-based environment. Students will learn how to use the engineering design process, and they will learn how to use all the makerspace equipment, 3D printers, laser cutting. I was able to take my son and a few other kiddos to do some practice lessons. And, you know, many of them had never even seen a 3D printer and seen the magic that can kind of happen in that creative environment. So we're excited to offer the STEM modules. In addition to the STEM curriculum, we'll provide college and career support. And our career pathways is really centered on exploring careers in engineering and STEM, but expanding the students' belief in their potential and the understanding of what a STEM pathway is and where they can go. But it's really equipping them with the skills that they need, both short-term, to be successful in high school, but also to be successful long-term in college and beyond in their career. So while the focus is really on STEM education, we know that that has to overlap with the additional skills that they're going to need to be successful. And so we really talk about what is the STEM in that academic piece, but then how does that actually pair together with that college and career success component?
The one thing I'd like to mention was the work that we're doing with Khan Academy that connects to all of this. We have a three-year grant that we've given to Khan Academy. They're going to do two things for us. One, they're going to create TEAC standards. We create all of their content, TEAC's aligned, thank you, content. Their math and science content will all be TEAC's aligned to the new standards, as well as they're going to create teacher-facing content of all of their math and science curriculum that is currently available. And so this is something that has not been done at all with any states to have alignment to the curriculum in that way, as well as it's brand-new to have any of the content to be teacher-facing, where teachers can go out and make sure they understand the content as well. So this is something that we're also very excited about. So I will wrap up with just kind of showing some quick renderings of our space, of our Spring location. We wanted it to be approachable, impactful, as well as functional. This is a tent, well, the space is larger, but we're going to take about 10,000 square feet of, it's actually a former daycare center that didn't reopen after COVID, right outside of ExxonMobil's security gates. So about 10,000 square feet, you'll see in the front lounge, this is where students will enter. They'll be able to have their meals there, to fellowship with one another. There's a little periodic table there in the back where they'll be able to showcase some of the wonderful things they're creating in the makerspace. There's walls that they can write on and do a lot of amazing things. You see that it's well-lit in the hallways and the corridor areas. Bright, welcoming, approachable for our students. Flex lab space is there on the lower left, where we can do academic support, instruction before they go in and use some of the machinery that we will have there, 3D printer room. And our digital garage, I'm super excited about, raised floors. It's going to be really that kind of cool space that students can go into to have some VR, some artificial reality, not artificial, augmented reality experiences in that space as well. So we are just beyond excited about these two initiatives. We are thrilled to be working with Spring ISD. We are thrilled that you all are early adopters, and that you have been so cooperative and so ready to help us with, to accomplish the goals that we both have for the students here in Spring. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for doing this. I've believed in the research that shows that kids who have to build something that works actually get very interested in a circuit or any of the equipment they're using that it actually works, and they want to understand it. So I just think this is a wonderful approach. Also, I understand you're working with Dr. Janice Meyer at Texas A&amp;M. Yeah, and having had a recent meeting with her. I know that she has a virtual training program for, like, the medical school and for, you know, all kinds of professional people at Texas A&amp;M that I think are working with a well-known commodity. I just did want to point out on page 77 of the contract that students under number six, student requirements, students must meet the following criteria, qualify for free and reduced-price meals. I can tell you that there's going to be many, many, many students in Spring ISD who are going to qualify for that.
Yes.
The other thing is to have the minimum GPA of 3.0 and 2.75 GPA in math and science. I think that's a good, that's a good sweet spot there, that you're, because sometimes the kids who really will go for this aren't interested in a traditional classroom, perhaps, and they're not failing, but they're not the 4.0 kids. So I think that that's a very well-selected criteria there. And I understand that you will change this if you're not getting the right amount of people and that sort of thing. But I think, and you're going to be also paying for the bus fare, I saw, back and forth. So you're just making all the arrangements to make this thing work. So anything we can do for you, let us know.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Jason.
Thank you for the presentation. This is a great idea and a great opportunity for our students. I noticed that it says area schools. Is this, do you have other partnerships with other districts that are also going to be bringing in students? And what is the decision as far as, is there a certain number of students per district that Exxon will be selecting as part of the pilot of the 75 kids?
Yeah, so we do have other districts that we are working with in collaboration for these efforts. And we are now in the process of determining how many students we will have, you know, coming from each district. We have not set a target, we have not set a distinct number, because maybe some districts may not be able to meet that number, and others can bring a little bit more. So I hope it's 75 within that first year total. If Spring, as we're meeting with you all, say, you know, okay, we can fill those numbers, we take that, you know, and we say, okay, let's take a look at that and see how we can make that work. We have two locations. So one thing that we're trying to accomplish is that the students can get there within about 15, 20 minutes to the centers. So it may be the case that, you know, our Spring High School students can get to the Spring location a little bit easier. Maybe some of our other districts can get to the Houston location, this particular center, a little bit closer, you know, sooner. So we're trying to still sort that out. We are working through those numbers right now, and I'll be able to give you something a little bit more firm on that here when it comes to the end of the year.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Did want to share that this is something that we have been in the works to for some time. Actually, our superintendent, Dr. Hina Hosa, had met with the president of the foundation and shared with him the needs here in Spring. That's a big part of how this partnership came about, really with the vision of Spring ISD being the incubator district, where this initiative, and I know they went through it pretty quick on the slide, it's starting here, but it is, the goal for ExxonMobil Foundation is that it spreads across the globe. And so, you know, with these initial first seats with our own Spring ISD, being students being able to experience that, and then we know from that, not just spurring that love for STEM, but also their future careers, many of which will be able to move on to ExxonMobil. And I know that's the goal for the partnership, and continue having their families right here in our Spring community.
Yes, I better myself, thank you.
I also think this is a wonderful idea and an innovation that I think more school districts need to explore in partnering. I want to talk about a couple of things in the memorandum. So you probably heard at the start of this meeting, I started out by reading an equity statement. And I was heartened to see your second whereas addresses the issue of equity. It is not explicit. I note that, that the word isn't used here. But it does address our concern as it relates to equity in providing programming and services to all kids, regardless of whatever category somebody wants to make up and put our kids into. So thank you for that. And I also note that there's a non-discrimination clause here, which also addresses my concerns as the Equity Chair about equity in programming for our kids and for our teachers, by the way. I had a question about data sharing, or I don't know if I've really formulated my question. The first thing that comes to my mind when I start seeing things, talking about data sharing and student data with entities outside of Spring is, like, FERPA compliance. And so I just, like, I will have questions around that as we move forward. But also because an approach this board is taking towards any partner But also because an approach this board is taking towards any partnership or any program or anything we do, there are questions that come up around return on investment. And I recognize that you all are grantors here. So I'm not forgetting that, but when the data starts to come back, we will want to see like how this is benefiting. We want concrete data on how that's going. And so I say that for all the people that you will be working with from Spring that know that that's an expectation of this board. Thank you.
And I also want to thank you all. I know Alvin couldn't be here. It's like, where is he? Why isn't he here? This is, you know, as Dr. Parisol said, you know, this has been a long time coming with some great colleagues to be able to have this discussion and for ExxonMobil to really take what Spring wants to do, our vision. You just heard the presentation on opportunities and choice. And I'll tell you, my first meeting with the board back in 2014, when we were designing the very first strategic plan, that was a cornerstone and it continues to be a cornerstone. And, you know, for the board, for you, this is one way that we are carrying forth that strategic priority. But most important for ExxonMobil to be able to sit with us and really develop this program to what we need. And I know originally I had said to Alvin, we want sole source. We want to be the only district. And I know I was talking to Dr. Jensen and she was telling me, well, they're looking at other districts. I'm like, what happened? But, you know, we can definitely share, but we know one of our biggest priorities is our middle school, our middle school teachers and this STEM and their learning is so critical for us. And then absolutely in the high schools, the alignment of this program to the pathways. You just saw a little earlier, our pathways that we have in CTE. And so we've already mapped it out where these courses would be that the children, the young people would be taking and then going on to the center. So we're truly excited. And like I said to Alvin, this is a long time coming and full investment of Spring ISD to get this off the ground. And like we said, we do want to be that example for the world, not just for Texas here. ExxonMobil is worldwide and I know, you know, our students will definitely take great pride in being able to partner with ExxonMobil and Texas A&amp;M. Thank you so much.
Could I have a follow-up? I had a follow-up question. Did you?
I was letting everybody else go first. Go ahead.
Okay, the teachers. How do we select the teachers? Because I didn't see that in here.
Yeah, we'll be, we did not put the teacher component within that MOU because that'll be with Texas A&amp;M. And we will be working with the principals and with the district to make those selections.
And just saying, no other schools are within 15, 20 minutes of your center, so.
Understood. But I will say with it on the teacher side, we are looking for those teachers that, you know, if it says Dr. Tingles participates, oh, wow, it must be something pretty cool with this particular teacher, you know? So we're hoping that the principals and our district administrators will be able to help us to do some targeted recruitment to those teachers who could benefit the most and will be some shiny stars in the program.
Well, I'm real excited about the partnership. And I know Dr. Jensen, I believe, was on the board with me, it was well over a decade ago when ExxonMobil first came and met with us that they were moving here within the Spring boundaries. And to actually have an opportunity to begin to partner with, especially around STEM, to bring forward opportunities, not just for our students, but for your pipeline as well. And then to incorporate the teachers in it as well is really exciting. And so I'm, I'm really glad to see you here. I want to congratulate you guys. I want to thank our administration for continuing to push forward and bring in these amazing opportunities to our students. We focus on every student, every teacher, every day. And we want to be able to see them soar and be successful in their careers once they move on from here. And these are the kind of opportunities and programs that begin to make that vision come to life. And so we want to thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Great job. Great job.
You have another item, Mr. Parisol, you can continue.
You, Madam President, yes, I just have two more items. The next one can be found on page 79 of your packets. This is another long-term partnership like ExxonMobil. This one has been a partnership with the Texas Workforce Commission for almost 20 years. And it is an MOU with local match contribution. This is supporting our program at Westfield High School where students from across the district who may have children, they're able to be provided with no-cost childcare so they can finish school. And also if there are empty seats that are available, we also allow our employees to utilize a rate that is much lower than what they would pay for outside childcare for those students. There are some numbers there so you can see what the size is. And it is up to four years old for those students being offered in the program.
This is a recurring item. Are there any questions? Thank you, Dr. Parisol. You can continue.
The next item can be found on page 93. This is an amendment to our prior work that we had started in 2020 in a partnership with the University of Texas. They developed a curriculum that has been utilized by our engineering teachers to provide instruction to students at Winchee High School that are in the engineering pathway. There's approximately 150, there's 159 students in that pathway currently and that receive instruction through this program. And so this provides an update to that agreement and an extension to allow us to continue that partnership.
Dr. Parisol, now it seems to me the teachers for these courses are prime for that Exxon.
Yes, this is, this is for Winchee, so it's our high school teachers. They do get training through the University of Texas on the implementation of the curriculum. The ExxonMobil partnership will allow us to get teachers at the middle school level to get training on STEM and how to integrate that, whether that be your science or math teachers. So we're going to keep that, that passion for STEM earlier and earlier.
Now, sometimes those teachers make wonderful leaders of professional development.
And board members as well.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Durant, I just wanted to just point a privilege and do a recognition. We have Ms. Williams in the back. She's our Director of CTE Programs. And so all three programs, she is heavily involved, has been involved with the ExxonMobil discussion and, you know, looking at the courses that the students would be taking so that there is a correlation with what they are experiencing after school at the STEM Tech Center and what the teacher and the students would have during the day. Of course, our daycare program and this Winchee program. So I wanted to thank Ms. Williams for her leadership. And these three items are all part of the work that she does, she and her team. I know she always says her team.
Do you want to stand up and do you happen to have anyone with you this evening? They got to go, they got to go home tonight, okay? Congratulations. Great work. Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Parisol. Our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resource Services, Dr. Taro King.
Good evening, President Durant, trustees, Dr. Hino Hosa, senior leadership staff and guests. My first item that I bring to you tonight is for one of our highly valued and hard-working group of employees, our custodians. And a recommendation for a compensation plan adjustment and a market equity adjustment for our currently employed custodians. When working with our building operations team this school year, one of the hardest to fill positions has been our custodial positions. Out of 308 positions district-wide, we currently have 71 of those positions that are vacant. So that's a little bit north of 20% of the workforce. And so that is greatly impacting service delivery for campuses and for our facilities to be able to make sure that our students are accessing, accessing facilities that are up to our standards. And one of the also issues we've been having is retaining our custodians. And so we wanted to look at ways, bring a recommendation to try to stem those losses and to try to see if we can bolster to make it through this school year. And so this plan here is to do that. And so here is our, a lot of the data that you will see here from the 22, 23 school year, because this is the market salary data, the most recent market salary data that's available to us. We get our information from the TASV HR data source and districts right now are submitting their salary information for the 23, 24 school year. So you'll see when I reference market, I'm referencing last year's market. And so last year, our average hourly rate for custodians in Spring ISD was $12.91. And in the market last school year, and this market contains both school district and non-school district employers, the average custodian pay in the market in the Houston area was $14.67. And you see behind the general market, we were lagging in compensation. This chart here shows with our school district market, not the non-school district market, but the school district market with some districts here in the Houston area, where Spring ISD ranked for last year with average custodian compensation. And so you can see with that $12.91, we were 10th in the market in average compensation. You see the pay range, maximum and minimum, minimums and maximums for those districts as well. And also included a column to, if these districts gave us, gave a pay increase in 23 and 24, the 23, 24 school year, so that we can make some assumptions about where they stand at this point in the market. So for example, you know, Aldine had a, last year had a similar starting rate to us of $12 per hour in 22, 23. However, you'll notice they gave all of their custodians a $1,500 raise, which roughly works out to be about 60 cents per hour. But they also increased the minimum wage, minimum wage in their district to $15 per hour. Goose Creek, Aleve, had a, their ranges were below ours. However, they gave an 8% pay increase. And so not, now, not every district did, right? So some of those numbers remain stable. However, it's, so the ones that did are affecting our market placement as well.
So if I'm reading this correctly, everyone that was below us did some sort of a raise.
Correct.
Last year.
Yes.
Right, and their numbers would be higher.
Correct, yes. So this next slide is our recommendation, which is a twofold recommendation. One, a 7% increase to auxiliary pay grade one, which contains our custodial positions that are hard to fill, that has the 71 vacancies. You see our current minimum midpoint and maximum and the currently average hourly rate. You will notice that $12.83 is lower than the average hourly rate the last school year. And that's because of the custodians we've hired so far this year, we've hired less experienced custodians because we do offer compensation based on years of experience for custodians. Not every district does that, but the average hourly rate is slightly less than last year because the custodians we've hired have fewer years of experience. And so we are proposing a 7% increase to the minimum mid and maximum, along with a 7% increase to the actual salaries of our custodians. And so that would bring, in that proposed column, you see what it would do to the minimum midpoint and maximum and also what it would bring our hourly average rate to our currently employed custodians to. And you see their approximate cost there at the bottom. And this is a modest proposal. And the reason for that is that last column is auxiliary pay grade two. And so you can see, if you look at current and auxiliary two, that's our current spread in the pay compensation plan. And so in your compensation plan, we always want to have progression in between the pay grades. And so this is going to cause some compression in between pay grade one and pay grade two. But it does allow, it does maintain pay plan integrity to allow that there is still a, an increase from pay grade one to pay grade two. And the, we can address the, if, but if we go over that pay grade two numbers, then that's going to cause a domino effect where we're going to have to address all 10 pay grades in the auxiliary pay plan, which will dramatically increase that approximate cost number. And so that's why at this, we can come back during the 24, 25 budget cycle to look at additional changes to the auxiliary pay grade. And as we, you know, one of the goals with our budget reductions is to be able to reduce enough so that we can make some of these adjustments along with recommending pay increases as well. And so what, yes.
Because where does that 1373 land us?
So that 1373 would land us right below Cypress Fairbanks and above Klein. I believe that 2%, the one that jumps up really from the bottom is Aleve because of that 8% raise. I believe when I calculated that, that was about $13.82 for their average, average pay. Oh, sorry. But it puts us, you know, it helps us, it puts us a little bit higher in the market. But it's not, it's not completely where we would like to be.
I have some concerns. I've had the opportunity to speak with some of our head custodians. They're having trouble filling their positions. They trained someone and they just lost someone to chicken places closed on Sundays.
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A.
Yes.
Because they're playing, they're paying like 18 and 20, you know, so they're, they've, and I know even at the Kenny, we have the staff, the staff for like 16 and she only has nine right now. And with the rise on COVID right now, to me, these are very critical roles and positions, you know, in our district. So I really feel like we need to do something. So I'm in support of what you're bringing. I just don't know if it's enough. That's my concern. Is it enough?
Right, and our, our goal would be a two-pronged approach. Like I said, to be able to come back as we go through the 24, 25 budget cycle and make it a priority to, when we show you this chart, to show you that we are at the top of the market. But, you know, we need to achieve some budget reductions and able to be able to do that.
So kind of along those lines, you mentioned the compression. And is that the 20 cents roughly difference between the upgraded auxiliary one versus auxiliary two pay?
And so on this slide, this shows our placement scale. And so our original is the current placement scale for auxiliary one. And then on the right-hand side, you see where auxiliary two is. And then in the middle is the new placement scale. This is the, based on the custodian's years of experience, where they will be placed with their salary. And so you can see where it was about a dollar difference previously between one and two. We're eliminated to, you know, down to 16 to about 20, 20 cents now. So there's still auxiliary two, those positions still receive a higher rate, but it's, we've raised those rates higher, which then allow us to then, that's what impacts our average hourly rate for our employees to bring it up to that 1373.
So correct me if I'm wrong. What we're concerned about is if we go any higher, now we impact the next level.
Yeah.
And then their question is, what about us?
Yes, ma'am.
So do we consider, because you mentioned we're one of the few districts that pay based on, on experience. Would it make more sense to consolidate so that would allow us to pay more if we were to change that?
Reduce our head count of custodians?
No, the, the, the difference in pay versus for the years of experience. I thought, I thought you mentioned that we pay, we pay based on years of experience and not a lot of other districts do that.
Yes, a lot of different districts, just if you're coming in as a custodian, you're new to the district. Yes, a lot of different districts, just if you're coming in as a custodian, you're new to the district, you start at the minimum of the pay scale. With our compensation plan, we have these displacement scales. So if you come in with experience, for example, if you're a ten-year custodian, currently you receive thirteen dollars and forty cents an hour. Under this recommendation, those, they will receive fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents an hour.
And what is the difference in experience level between one and two?
The, the job type. And for that, I will turn to Mr. Miranda, our, our chief of operations.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat that question.
The difference in experience, I guess what I'm getting at is, is do we need to, to maybe relook at how we're, how we're, our pay structure is set up that would allow us to be in a better place to pay more, I guess.
The positions in auxiliary two are different positions. And so they have different duties.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not.
It's not the same. It's not custodian to custodian. Those are things, those are individuals that have additional responsibilities.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
What is the data that we use to get to these numbers? How, how do we land here?
We, we landed here with the, the cap being the auxiliary two pay, pay scale, not trying to cause a domino effect. Where then we would, because originally when I was looking at some of the numbers, if we wanted to go higher, then we'd have to change auxiliary two, which then would mean is a domino effect for the all nine, all ten of the pay grades. And so this allowed us to give a modest increase while maintaining pay system integrity, play plan integrity, and without having to increasing the cost of this, because we understand that this, this goes towards our deficit.
So the three hundred and eight are auxiliary one?
Yes, and those.
What is the, with seventy-one vacancies, twenty percent? What is our auxiliary two volume and percentage of vacancy rate?
I believe Ms. Miranda has those numbers for auxiliary two. Yes.
Give me a second and I'll look that up for you.
Did we do any kind of study or analysis to see if there was anything outside of pay where there was opportunity to incentivize?
As far as, at, at this point, I mean, those would be things like for next year's compensation plan is to look at recruitment, recruitment bonuses, looking at our total rewards options for our custodians that we would have to build into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
And I ask the question, I ask this because is the twenty percent in just auxiliary one? Or do we have the same issue in auxiliary two?
So auxiliary two, as I mentioned before, is not all just custodial positions. So the auxiliary positions make up different operational level. And they're not all operation positions. Let me.
Okay.
I put the, I had the comp manual up to, I just had it up.
It would be nice to see what all is in auxiliary, in our auxiliary positions. Because I don't know.
Where did I do it?
If we've made a lot of focus on that.
Yep.
Role when we do the budget.
Here it is. Here it is. I have it. So auxiliary two includes, I can give you, I can, you want me to just name some of the positions or?
I'll come down.
Yeah, you can come down. I'll go up.
We'll have that.
I'll put it up.
So you can see that. And I know one, you know, Dr. King started out, this was really a two-pronged approach was to do something right now to assist with the vacancies that we have with our custodians. And the recommendation that we come back during the budget process and look at the whole category. And to be able to consider our levels.
Okay, so auxiliary one, you'll see is, you know, all of those that are listed under, under number one. You'll see custodian, there are two hundred and forty day and two hundred and sixty day custodians that are in that category. The majority of auxiliary one are custodians, and they have, some have different titles. For example, a floater is exactly what you would think it is. A laundry deliverer supports custodial staff. A floor technician is a custodian who, who does project work across the district. So the majority of the auxiliary one positions are custodial positions. And that's where that seventy-plus vacancy level is in that auxiliary one. As TK and I were discussing this, we realized that you couldn't move ninety percent of auxiliary one without moving a hundred percent of auxiliary one, because there's only a couple of other people that, that may not, I'm sorry. There's only one other position that, one other person who's not in that category that's a custodial support. So all of auxiliary one is what TK is sharing with the board. Auxiliary two is not custodial. They're just a part of the, this pay scale for auxiliary positions. The only custodial position in auxiliary two is a night lockup person. You kind of see that fourth down from the top. That's elementary, middle school and high school night, night lockup. And they get a pay differential, obviously, because they're working a late shift, right? And they're also responsible for keys and locking up the building. Most of the other people in auxiliary two, they're, they're from various different departments. There's several that are from child nutrition, stadium groundskeepers, vending specialists, and things of that nature. And so the numbers of vacancies, there are vacancies on auxiliary two. I don't have those numbers right in front of me. But in terms of custodial vacancy to custodial vacancy in auxiliary two, there's really not a huge auxiliary two custodial vacancy. Because there's really only one position in there that's custodial related.
Okay, I ask the question because I understand this is a two-pronged approach. We need to do something immediately. Because we've got a twenty percent vacancy rate. I didn't want, and we'll look at the others later, but I don't want to come back and say, well, we've got a fifteen percent vacancy rate in auxiliary two. I just want to make sure we're, we're looking at it holistically.
Really, really where the, the pressure is on the vacancies is in auxiliary one.
So I'm going to take the weekend and process my thoughts on this. But it feels reactive to me. And it, like, what do we need to do to anticipate these shifts? As we, like, there's right now a movement in this country for like, you hear it, the fight for fifteen, right? And so I, I think at ACDE, the minimum wage is fifteen dollars an hour, like you, you. So I, I don't see how we could afford to do that. And so how do we get to a place where we're being proactive about how we compensate our people? So that they have a living wage. Even what we're doing is, is, as President Durant said, doesn't feel sufficient to me. And we need to close the gap for seventy-one positions, but we're still, I don't think we're near where we need to be. I, I wonder if what we're doing here, even, I'm inclined to do it, but I wonder how much of a dent that's going to make.
If I can, if I can address that just a little bit, as we were having the discussion about bringing this item forward to the board, one of the things we talked about is we knew that this wasn't the long-term solution, like this wasn't the final solution, right? This is what we talked about in our senior leadership team meeting as more of a stopgap. This is kind of a, if the patient's bleeding, this is kind of put a, a compression on that, on that wound, right? This is not something that we consider as a long-term, complete fix, and all of our seventy positions are going to come in. This is something to stop us from losing positions, to, to also show these positions that we are thinking about them. And I realize that giving them just a few pennies or what have you, a few cents in a raise, isn't the, the be all, end all answer, but it is something that we would be able to tell the custodians, we see you, we recognize that there's an issue and we're actively trying to address that issue. We know that this isn't the end. We know that there has to be something bigger. And that something bigger, right now is probably unknown, because we have to look at multiple positions and which positions are the ones that are most critical, which positions where we have vacancies, where maybe we don't need those positions or we need to adjust. Maybe there are positions that we need to combine. There's multiple different solutions to the problem. There's not a single solution. Ms. Westbrook tells us all the time that money is not always the only solution for these types of issues. And we definitely take her advisement into consideration when we're looking at these things. But again, this was something that we saw as a kind of a, a stopgap, something that we could go back to the custodians and say, we know this isn't the end. We know this isn't the final kind of version, but just hang on with us, right? Stay in this fight with us. We know that there's an issue and we're working on it. And the board recognizes that.
I guess, Chief, I, I guess I'm wondering, how do we keep getting here? Because I feel like I've had this conversation before about us lagging behind the new districts around us and not paying our folks enough. And like, I, I guess I'm wondering, what are our lessons learned from somewhere to not end up having to have this conversation again? Because we're ahead of this wave that keeps, you know, coming over top of us every couple of years.
Absolutely, Mr. Adams. I wanted just to reiterate, you know, unfortunately, with salaries, it is a very competitive market. Remember when we took the big leap for our teachers and we said we're going sixty thousand five hundred? Because we needed the, the staff, right? We were, we were desperate. And what happened the day after? Aldine came right behind us and outbid it us, right? So it is a very competitive market. We absolutely know that this is reactionary, but we want to, we need, we're desperate. We need to do something. I also want to remind, you know, everyone that, that is out there. You know, unfortunately, we did not have the opportunity to do any pay raises to anyone. So last year, we gave no pay raises, but we did do retention stipends. Our custodians, I want to make sure, our staff received two thousand retention. And our professionals, our teachers received four thousand, Ms. Westbrook's, three thousand. Depending on years of experience, right? So we had to make that difficult decision to say we were holding on the salaries and we instead gave the stipends, the retention stipends in order to, to make up the difference. And so we know that, you know, we, for custodians, it's just as competitive as it is for teachers. And so we want to be able to move closer to that ultimate solution. But we will always be competing with our, you know, neighboring districts, just like we did our bus drivers. Remember, we came through, we increased the salary of the bus drivers and like the next week, the other districts did the same thing. So one is, you know, the compensation that we want to address. And the other piece that we, you know, spoke very honestly about is also, you know, working with our custodians. What's the culture in the building? How do we treat each other? Is this a place that you want to come and work with us and stay with us? So it's a, it's a, it's a multifaceted approach, but we believe that this is very, yes, absolutely reactionary. But it is a way to move towards a solution. And then ultimately, as we go through the budget process, be able to look at a comprehensive solution for all, you know, everyone, knowing that we're also in a, in a huge budget deficit. So what does it look like moving forward? It's going to be some really tough discussions, but the administration is bringing something forth that would help address, as Ms. Miranda is saying, you know, a, a compression for right now. We know our schools need the support. We know the vacancies are great out there. We want to provide that quality of, of, of safe learning environment. And our custodians play such a huge part in helping us do that.
And those, those are great points you bring, Mr. Adams. Just to reinforce what Dr. Hinoza said, compensation is always a moving target. So we must always pay attention to when we give our increases, coming back and looking at where the market has moved. And then you, we have to move with the market every year. What happened this year is, right, we did not change our pay grades or give them a raise. And so the two-fold effect that we fought, that we fell behind, so it's like when you see Aldine going to a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage. And so one of the things that we can do is always bring it to the board's attention, like where positions stand in the market and, and being able to keep, keep pace with where we are.
Just, that's sort of an academic exercise. And it's something that I've talked about in terms of the budget. We talk about the sixty-one hundred dollars per pupil we get per year from the state. I just did a back of the napkin calculation and the cost for this is about eight dollars per student. And I think articulating that for people, I think the more you hear what's something we're doing is costing per child, people can start to add that up in their own mind. That's eight dollars out of that sixty-one hundred dollars. And we're asking for a thousand dollars to be added to the basic allotment. And if, when we talk about these things, we talk about them in terms of cost per pupil, people can start to add that up for themselves and, and see, well, you know, it's not going to cover it if we add everything up. So I just wanted to put that out there. I just did that really quickly.
It's a great point. We can start bringing information in that, in that context for sure. And so just on, I know, returning on investment, as Mr. Adams spoke earlier in the meeting, is very high priority for this board. So I just identify just goal, risks and measurement for this change. You know, our goal is to reduce the number of vacant positions in auxiliary pay grade one. Our risk, we know this adds to the budget deficit. And these changes alone may not have the desired effect. It's, it's going to really require on an HR team, we have to do focused recruitment to, to reach our goal. And part of that, I was having a conversation with our talent acquisition team earlier. And this goes to our general recruitment strategy. And it goes, I hope I'm not offending any fishermen. But it goes between the difference between fishing and hunting. When you fish to recruit, you cast a lure and you see who bites, who responds to your lure. But hunting is a little bit more active. You're changing your, your position. You are moving around. And so we are going to have to recruit for this, non-traditional. Yes, we've been hosting job fairs with operations team and they've been well attended. But we need to go out and recruit and market outside of spring ISD to get people to our job fairs and not just, not just on our website or on social media, actually getting on the community on Saturday morning and handing out flyers and recruitment for this. We're going to be very aggressive to mitigate those risks. And so our measurement, if we want to get between ninety-five percent and a hundred percent of the vacancies, retain, retain our current custodians and reduce the vacant positions to five percent of the workforce. So we can be ninety-five to a hundred percent staff, which roughly works out to about sixteen positions. And we can keep the board updated on one, our recruitment efforts and on also the measurement through board update. But this, this recommendation would also, in a year where our custodians did not give them a raise, this would give them a seven percent pay increase. Moving, moving forward from today or when, when approved.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have any more questions.
Okay.
You have two more items, right?
Yes, yes, I did. Yes, I did. I didn't know if y'all were going to take action tonight or wait till.
I don't know.
Tuesday.
We're going to vote on Tuesday because I know that some of them want to process. I, I was pausing a minute to see if there's any other information anybody wants or needs.
My, I know we talked about in the past how we got to where we are with the deficit. So my concern, I definitely understand that we need custodians. We need the pay raises. But I just want to keep that in mind, because from my understanding that we're in a portion of the deficit is because of pay raises that were given a few years ago prior to me being on the board. So I just want to keep that in mind. Secondly, what are we, have we thought about? I definitely think you're going to have to recruit, think outside the box, really, not only the recruitment piece, but the retention piece. So think about what types of incentives we can offer. And we were, we've said several times, you know, you just can't, we don't want to compete fiscally with our neighboring districts, because that could just really, yeah, that could just bankrupt us and we, we can't keep doing that. So we've got to try to figure out a way to prevent us from getting to this point and having these conversations. And I'm not sure what that plan. And I'm not sure what that plan looks like, but I think we need to. Yeah, we need to think about it. You said minimum wage is what?
Fifteen dollars.
So if minimum wage is fifteen dollars. Oh, I thought, I'm so confused, but say, wait a minute, we're breaking off our laws. Okay.
I know.
Okay, but with that being said, even as I'm looking at, looking at where we would be if we were to give this increase, to me it's still not high enough to keep them here with just saying, okay, we're going to give you all this seven percent. Please stick with us and stay. When our neighboring districts are offering more, you know, so we're going to have to figure out ways to give them something outside of it being monetary, if that's even of interest. And I don't know what that looks like, but I know just giving them, putting a Band-Aid on this, I don't think it's going to help us reach the results that we're looking for. That's just my opinion.
You're exactly right, Trustee Hodges. And I want to take a minute to introduce two members of my team here, the compensation team that are here, Dr. Tamika McKeithen, our Assistant Superintendent for HR Operations, and our newest team member, I believe this is three weeks in, our Director of Compensation Benefits and Leaves, Bridget Moore, has just joined our team. And a conversation that we were just having last week was about total rewards. And that while, and that is what you're speaking to, Trustee Hodges, is those things that aren't part of compensation, but that as a experience working with Spring ISD, for example, there are some districts that offer healthcare, not healthcare facilities. Well, our healthcare facility is a total reward because you can go to there, access a doctor for zero cost. Some districts have, for better or less, gyms, right? In which you have access to work, to do your exercises while paying a gym membership. And so it is looking, I was just having a conversation with them last week, that we have to expand our total rewards offerings as well to be able to go beyond compensation.
One of the things that I think we've kicked around also too is reviewing the, our positions, you know, the position control. And so I think this kind of puts an impetus on us to get to that as soon as possible. To Mr. Miranda's point, you know, trying to figure out like where we're at in our positions, what, do we still need certain ones? Are there others that we can start to merge together? And I think once we get to that point, it would help us in this area because I would assume it would free, you would hope it could free up some dollars.
Yes, 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 indeed.
And I'm still, you know, Trustee Adams asked, how do we get here? And I don't know if we've done a good analysis study or focused attention around auxiliary positions. I don't know if we focused on those during the budget process. So we may want to maybe, you know, take a look at that because that could be how we got here.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, if there are no more questions, I can proceed to the next item.
You sure can.
Thank you. Our next item is we're asking the board to authorize the superintendent to receive some grant funds from the Houston Endowment. This first one is for a project support grant for our Spring ISD Talent Strategic Planning. So our work, this will help support the HR department's work in continuous improvement. This is a three-year grant to partner us with the Urban Schools Human Capital Academy for three years. And so we recognize in order to best support the districts and schools' talent efforts, the Human Resource Services team serves as a key driver to the work and we have to move from being a transactional office to being a strategic partner with the district. And so that includes increasing knowledge and awareness and tracking of relevant best practices, increasing leverage and use of human capital data to measure progress as well as provide direction and focus in support of planning and decision-making and instill a focus on the key customer to ensure services and support are timely, efficient and helpful. And so this three-year support, we apply for and receive a grant from Houston Endowment to provide three years of support from the Urban Schools Human Capital Academy to help us become that true strategic partner for Spring ISD.
And it's for five hundred thousand?
And it's for five hundred thousand dollars. Most of the work, if you, when you look at the budget on page one hundred and seven, is in year one. There's a lot of professional development in supporting year one and ongoing supports for year two and three for progress monitoring.
This is a great opportunity. Is there any questions, Trustee Adams?
So we talked earlier in the year about the development of capacity to manage our own substitutes.
Yes.
So this will support that effort?
Yes.
Can we talk a little bit about?
Yes.
How we're progressing towards doing that in the next several months?
Yes, January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-four is our target date, which we will take over management of our substitutes from Kelly Education. And so we have just secured, she's not here tonight, but we have hired a substitute manager, Maya Guidry. And she will, we just had our first meeting with Kelly Education to transition that process. It took us a little bit while to get this position hired because remember there were no new allocations for substitute office. So I had to eliminate some positions, notify staff, then post and hire once those positions were eliminated. So Ms. Guidry has been brought on board and now we are planning for the recruitment of our substitute pool and also managing the transition from Kelly, the mid, to transition of our applicant, the absence management system, maintaining the same absence management system that Kelly Education used so that there's no relearning at the campus level for principals and their assistants to be able to learn a whole new system mid-year. And we're going to bring some strong recruitment efforts to be able to, just to, right now, all of the subs are Kelly's employees, but to bring as many over as possible and recruit new ones as well.
Is that what is meant in here by focused technical advisory and support? And then it is a line item listing substitute management?
Yes, yes, sir. And so that's for also helping us develop our substitute training program and making sure that it's high quality, a high quality program that we build. Yes, sir. Now we're going to direct coaching and advice in this area, which is very timely over these next two months.
You mentioned bringing over the substitutes from Kelly Services. Is there a fee for that or will we have, is there a waiting period once the contract ends with Kelly?
No, once the contract ends, the penalty that there is a purchase of their employee list that we're going to make, because all the substitutes and their demographic information resides with them. And so we're going to purchase that list to be able to begin our recruitment efforts. But once the contract ends, the contract ends. Which is technically is February first, but that's on a Wednesday. So we upset, upset with the team that we're going to start January twenty ninth, which is a Monday.
Any other questions? Dr. King, you can continue.
All right. And the last item I have here tonight is another exciting grant opportunity for our Opportunity Culture Project here in Spring ISD. Opportunity Culture is one of our Grow Your Own initiatives in the district. And so this was another grant that we applied for with Houston Endowment to help continue to support that program. Just as a reminder, Opportunity Culture is in eleven of our schools, elementary, seven elementaries and four middle schools. And the program consists of twenty-seven multi-classroom leaders, which are experienced teachers who serve as coaches to teacher residents and other teachers on the campus providing instructional coaching. Twenty-two REACH associates who are aspire, who aspire to be teachers, they're paraprofessionals, but they go in and provide support in the classrooms when those multi-classroom leaders are not in their classroom teaching. And sixteen teacher residents, which are college students, who are actually in an educator preparation program. And so, and our goal with them, the REACH associates and the teacher residents, I mean, that's our pipeline to the classroom. Our goal is for all of them to become Spring ISD teachers. This grant is going to be able to extend the reach of the teachers and their teams to impact more students. The Opportunity Culture Program extends the reach of excellent teachers and their teams to impact more students. Through this model, multi-classroom leaders with a history of high academic growth, reach more students and have more time to plan, collaborate and coach their team teachers, develop their REACH associates and mentor their teacher residents. MCL support and also develop their team through co-planning, co-teaching, co-leading, modeling, observing and providing feedback and coaching. This position, this allows us to hire for three years an Opportunity Culture Specialist, present to support our Opportunity Culture Director. And she is here tonight. I do want to recognize Ms. Tasha Tillman, who has been doing all of this work for the last two years by herself. So this provides her with some support to be able to do this work. So this specialist will help her in providing professional development support, lead the year-long professional development book study, collaborate with educator preparation programs, supervise and teachers to ensure the year-long residents receive the support they need and conduct walkthroughs and support the work of the MCL's REACH associates and teacher residents. And so we are also very excited about this and I want to thank Ms. Tillman for writing this grant.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Great work. Any questions?
This is our, this is, how many years have we done this now? The Opportunity Culture Model?
Yes, so this is our second full year. We had one year of planning. And so as Dr. King said, eleven schools now. We started with five and this summer we worked and trained seven. I say we, but Ms. Tillman and, and Ms. Tillman and Ms. Tillman. You know, we are partnering with Public Impact. And when we first started this work, it was through the T-Class Grant. And so T-Class paid for Public Impact to help us train, to help us plan. And so we launched the first five schools and then this summer with their help again, launched the seven. But that T-Class Grant ends this, the summer, this June twenty twenty-four. So this grant will bring the support and we've learned, you know, at the end of the day, when the grant goes away, we have to be able to continue the sustainability of this project. And so definitely Ms. Tillman knows this work really well. Will bring in this new person to be able to help us to carry and sustain this out.
Have we seen any of the resident interns or teachers sign on with us through this?
Absolutely. And we can have Ms. Tillman, I think we placed it on the board updates, but I think we have seven. Yeah, come on up and tell us, have had some really good results of those teacher residents. Continue with us, stay in, in Spring ISD as classroom teachers. And of course, we've had lots of success with the MCLs and their work.
Yes, President Durant, Dr. Hinoza and the board, yes. We do have retained our teacher residents. Last year, out of our ten teacher residents that were a part of us, we retained forty percent. And this year we have thirteen teacher residents and we're hoping to retain all thirteen of them this year.
And I believe four of them are graduating this year and so they have the opportunity to, I mean, our goal is for all four of those to become.
Our REACH associates. Because how it looks, you have your MCLs, which are your master classroom teachers. Then you have your REACH associates who are your teacher of, I don't call them a teacher's aide because it's a heavy lift because they do instruction. And out of our REACH associates, four of them will be graduating in twenty twenty-four with degrees in education. And so they've all said they're staying in Spring ISD because that's how they started in Spring ISD. And now we have our teacher residents. So this program with Opportunity Culture is definitely a grow your own and strengthen our pipelines. And we're starting with our teacher residents, to our REACH associates, to our paraprofessionals and also the opportunity to keep our master level teachers in the classroom. And that's one of the biggest goals. We want to keep our best teachers in the classroom to extend their reach, not only just to them, but also their team teachers.
And I also want to point out Ms. Tillman is new to the HR department. This was part of our realignment, was connecting our Grow Your Own initiatives with HR, with our talent acquisitions. So we are, we're all under one roof now and we're so glad to have Ms. Tillman and Ms. Tiffany Weston, who is our Director of Teacher Pipelines, under our talent acquisition roof in HR now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
This is me. I'm spring all day.
Thank you. And so both of those grant opportunities, we ask that they be part of the consent agenda for Tuesday night.
Do we want to consent or do we want to let the community know?
The more public, the better.
That's what I think. Any objection? Okay, let's not, let's not hide them under consent. Let's talk about them again. Okay, all right.
You know, I have to say when Ms. Tillman said, I'm spring all day, every day. She is a parent of two children at Thompson Elementary and Robertson. So yes, parent in our.
And she lives in spring. All right.
And she lives in spring. And what was the question?
I was saying she was at our building bridges. That's really great feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Okay, thank you, Dr. King. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our General Counsel, Jeremy Binkley.
Good evening. So tonight we have our second reading of Tasby Local Update one twenty-one. We did go through each of these policies last month and talk through what those changes are. So rather than touch on all of them tonight, I will ask the board if you have any questions about any of the policies that are up for second reading.
There was one DEA local compensation and benefits that we had asked the Governance Committee to take another look at. Did we do that? Were there any changes?
Yes, ma'am. So if you look at page one thirty-nine of your packet, the Governance Committee did discuss this. We were also able to get a little bit more clarity from Tasby. And so if you look at that page, the change that was being discussed was the third paragraph on that page where it talks about salary employees hired during the school year shall be paid in accordance with, instead of the compensation plan, administrative regulations. And so this is not taking the pay out of the compensation plan. This section is actually about annualized salary. And so if you look at the first sentence in that paragraph, it's regarding how the district shall pay all salaried employees over twelve months in equal monthly or semi-monthly installments, regardless of the number of months worked. And so that's our twelve, that's our equal, even pay, our twelve month pay.
Spread it out, okay.
The second sentence then is about those employees who are hired after the start of the school year. So there, those employees are clearly not getting their pay spread out over twelve months for when they started in December. Yeah, we're not, we're not paying their December to June pay over twelve months. We're paying it over six months or over eight months, however many months they're here. The compensation manual actually does not address that. And so this change will allow us to address that in the regulation, how that should be handled, just to make sure that employees who start after the beginning of the school year are receiving pay in the correct way.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I just have a couple of like minor typo type things. This is not a typo, but on page one forty-four, when I was reading through the changes in the policies, I noticed there was some weird formatting under one and four on that page. So that would not end up in our actual policy, would it?
No, sometimes that happens because this is usually generated through a compare in the word function. And sometimes those, those formatting issues do arise and as we go through it, sometimes we miss it or, but it does not end up in the final, the final version, no.
Okay, and on page one fifty-two, I found something that just doesn't read right to me and that's on transition assistance. If you just read that in substitute care enrolls in the district, the district shall assess If you just read that in substitute care enrolls in the district, the district shall assess the student's available records and other relevant information, ensure credit.
That two probably is.
You need something there.
It, it takes out that two.
The two should stay.
And it probably should stay. Well, definitely should stay. And I can look real quick and see if that.
You could insert a that after assess, between assess and the students available. But I just need something there. You're the lawyer. I appreciate it if you will do that wording. Thank you.
Yes, we will get that taken care of. So page three. Yes, Tasby's final version does, does include that too. So for whatever reason, it got that strike out.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. There are any additional questions? This is the second reading, so this will come for a vote on Tuesday. Or go under consent.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President.
Our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrook.
Good evening and thank you, President Durant, members of the board and Dr. Hannah Hosen. We're beginning tonight on page 157 with our monthly report of cooperative purchases that exceed $500,000, or excuse me, $50,000.
Any questions? Okay, you can continue.
And our next item is on page 161 and it is a request for proposal for restaurant and catering services. And as we've discussed a couple of times in the past, is that we had gotten over the aggregate spend of $50,000 in our food purchases. And so for that reason, we have to do a competitive purchasing. And so we're doing this recurring every six months so that any of our vendors that our campuses and our departments would like to do business with for that purpose, have that opportunity. So we're doing this fairly continuously so that we can continue to add those vendors. And so you can see here this evening, we have some recognizable vendors that have been added. The list is on page 162 and we're recommending nine of the 10 vendors that responded.
That makes some of the campuses happy, especially that golden chip.
Ms. Westbrook, I noticed on page 163, some of the ratings are fail.
Yes.
But they still got chosen. So this was, they could fail one of the categories and still be okay?
Yes. And so an example of that is that we would like to receive some form of a discount when we're placing orders. And so a company could say, there's no discount, we're charging the menu rate, but the rate is still considered reasonable. So even though they fail because they're not offering a discount, we still consider it reasonable and we would say overall, we would recommend them as a vendor. There are no additional questions? Then we'll move to the next item, which is the first budget review for the 2324 budget. And that begins on page 165. And it starts in somewhat of a letter format so that you can see the major changes that are happening within each of the fund types. And of course, as always, the supporting information is included in the depth of the report. So starting on the first fund, which is of course the general fund. On the revenue side, we have just an increase of $16,000 and that is for some insurance recovery funds that we received as well as what we refer to as our LOES, the Law Enforcement Officer Standard Education Funds that we received. And of course, both of those funding sources have an equal offsetting expenditure. On the expenditure side, we have an increase of just over $2 million and that is by and large made up of the re-appropriated prior year encumbrances. So at the end of a fiscal year, when we have purchase orders that are encumbered, meaning the funds are set aside, they lapse at the end of the year if the expenditure is not actually taking place. So we roll them forward to the next year. And so that's why we have the budget re-appropriated for those encumbrances. So that's 1.8 million. And then of course, we've had a presentation with the board regarding the ABL Schools report that we are doing to trustee Correa's point earlier, looking at our staffing efficiencies and that report is forthcoming. So that's in addition to the budget to pay for that service. In our child nutrition fund, we had an increase in appropriations of $272,000. And again, that's those re-appropriated encumbrances within the child nutrition fund. On the debt service fund, this time no, no changes to revenues or expenditures. With our special revenue funds, we had an increase to both budgeted revenues and budgeted appropriations of just under $5 million. And those changes, of course, when we go into our adopted budget, it's still early. We haven't received our final, or excuse me, our final notice of grant awards from our various state and federal grants. And so when we get to the first budget review, we're adjusting because at this time we have received those. So that's why those numbers are so large in the first review. On the capital project side, we had a slight increase to budgeted revenues of just $34,000. And then our appropriations are increased by $594,000. And again, those are estimates. We start the budget year with estimates and then we adjust in that first, excuse me, that first budget review, once we know what our role forward is actually. The last item to bring to your attention is the staffing allocations and the changes that were made to our staffing allocations. And they actually decreased in grand total by three positions as we completed our leveling process in, in September based on the September 6th enrollment, our projected enrollment versus actual enrollment at that time. So adjustments have been made there and the net change to positions is at three positions.
Does that mean the snapshot was below what we anticipated?
Our snapshot was below our projected enrollment. Our projected enrollment is $34,225 and we went over $34,000, but as snapshot, we were just below.
Do we assign any different, is there a variance in the values between professional positions and paraprofessional positions?
When you say a change in the variance?
So, I mean, you didn't call those FTEs. Like, is there like any dollar value for a Spring ISD FTE? Or is that a different category of thing than a position?
No. So a full-time equivalent position would be whether it's an administrator, teacher, they have a different value based on the pay grade that they fall in. So, but we would still consider a paraprofessional that's a full-time position, an FTE, just as we would an administrator or a professional position. It's an FTE, it just carries a different cost because of the pay grade that it falls within, but they are still FTEs.
And a way to think of the, how to estimate the cost is the midpoint of the pay grade the position is in plus 10% for benefits. And so that's the figures that are used on our side too when we're proposing positions or looking at, that's the budget control point is the midpoint plus 10% to account for benefits.
Because when you look at this report, it lists everything in dollars until you get to the staffing allocations. And so I, I said in my mind, it would be useful to be able to ballpark what three positions means.
And it could vary considerably.
I'm sure.
Correct. So with the teachers slash others, that can be a teacher, it can be a counselor, it can be a coach. And so those numbers could vary quite a bit. Same with our paraprofessionals, just depends on which pay grade they're in.
Any other questions?
If not, the last report of the evening begins on page 189. And this is our report, so the first budget review is budget only. The next report that we're looking at, beginning on page 189, is budget to actual. And so trustee Correa, I wanted to point this out because I believe it was at our last budget, or excuse me, our last board meeting where you made the comment of, do we review the budget to actual throughout the year? And so this is the report that we provide to the board on a monthly basis where we can see that those estimated revenues, estimated appropriations based on the budget compared to what's actually happening. And so we have ebbs and flows throughout the year. So in September, that's third month of the fiscal year, expenditures are very even, revenue not so much. And so we start seeing our revenue pick up and after, starting in September and then going forward. So this is the report that we use to just track and see how things are, are going along as it's compared to the budget. And so there's things that we know are going to happen in September, things are going to happen in October. And if there's any anomalies, then that's our time to dig in and really figure out what is it that's causing those, those changes that are happening throughout the year. So both, beginning on page 189, that's the revenues broken out, local sources, state and federal, and comparing the budget to where are we year-to-date. And then of course, the next page is expenditures. And so we're looking at it in two different ways, by function and by object. And then that last third page is just a comparison at that snapshot in time between September of 2023 versus September of 2022. And just what are those variances? And we just work our way through what's causing those variances. So this is a report that's included for the board's review each month in the board update. But then we bring it here three times a year, typically in alignment with our budget reviews around that same time so that we can have an opportunity to discuss or, or go over any questions or thoughts or concerns.
Thank you. Your last item this evening. If there are any other questions from Ms. Westbrook. Our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief district, chief of district operations, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Durant, Dr. Hannah Hosen, members of the board. We are back in our regular monthly cycle, working with the district-wide intruder detection audits. And I do have a report this month and we will likely have reports ongoing from here. We had 10 audits this past reporting period with three findings. And those findings will be discussed in executive session with Chief Rodrigue, who I think is here somewhere, will be joining us in, in a closed session to talk about those three findings.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. And so with that, the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, 551.074, and 551.076. Now voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in the open session. And the time is now 8:31 PM. We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 9:19 PM. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order to terminate the contracts of Juanita Herrera Frederick, David Dillon, and Tina Davis as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to be, I'm sorry, to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Code of, of the Texas Education Code.
I second.
It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee Jensen that the board render a final order to terminate the contracts of Juanita Herrera Frederick, David Dillon, and Tina Davis as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn tonight's work session.
Was moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee Adams to adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at 9:21 PM.